And he may appear in the next few minutes. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, March 3, 2021, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Phil D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The notice was given containing information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time, virtually just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door, and was also forwarded to the Item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the official newspapers for the Township of Milburn. Roll call, please.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston Halper?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yeah.
Mark Mattel?
Yeah.
Yes.
Maggie? You're there, but we can't hear you. Okay.
Ed, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Maggie?
Yeah.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
Here.
Greenie Vijay?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Marion Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman Betsel?
Here. Thank you. Our... We're gonna, yeah, we'll start, and we have no minutes to approve, so we will begin with Application 20014. Well, it's in order as business after. Do you want me to move it first?
Oh, oh, well, did I mess up the agenda? I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's following, but I'm okay to move to the application. Or do you want us to address the ordinance first and get it out of the way, hopefully?
No, the resolution. I guess I left the resolution. We have the resolution for Beehive?
I'm sorry.
I'm still on line. Apologies. Actually, I was still waiting for a few
Okay.
comments on that, so why don't we?
Cable them.
Yes.
Okay, apologies. Sorry, I thought you meant regarding the new ordinance, but we'll move to the application. Sorry for the confusion. Application 20014 for preliminary and final major subdivision approval. And if we want to bring in their counsel, Mr. Sersello, and then he can tell us who to call. Good evening.
Hello?
Hi there. We can hear you but not see you yet.
Oh, yeah, okay. I can't.
Beautiful. Good evening.
Good evening. Anthony Sersello with the Law Offices of Levitt and Sersello in Milburn, on behalf of C.V. Slope, who is the owner of 121 Slope Drive in Short Hills. We are seeking preliminary final major subdivision approval for conforming residential lots. I have one expert witness, Michael Lanza Fama from Casey &amp; Keller, who will testify that the subdivision requires no variance relief, that it complies with township zoning ordinance and the municipal land use law. We do seek two waivers from Section 509 Environmental Impact Statement and Section 525 Stormwater One-Off Provisions. We have secured Essex County Planning Board approval for the subdivision. My proofs of service were filed at the end of January 2021. We are in receipt and have reviewed various agency reports from Tanchen Forester, engineer, fire marshal, planner, and police. Madam Chair, ready to call my first witness unless you or members of the board have any questions.
You can call your first witness. Thank you.
Michael Lanza Fama.
Madam Chair and Mr. Sersello, before you do that, and I apologize for interrupting Mr. Fishman, but I just, with regard to the testimony, you've asked for two waivers. I know we sometimes want to bring these at the end, but these are checklist waivers, as I recall. So we should hear testimony just in terms of your schedule and your outline, Mr. Sersello, on those two waivers, and we should have the board make a determination on that so we don't go too far. And then find out that we have to carry this application for the submission of these items. So I apologize. Mr. Fishman, you can swear in. Mr. Lanza Fama?
Raise your right hand, sir. Thank you. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, and the matter now pending.
I do.
May we have your full names? May we have your full name, sir, please, and spell it?
Michael Lanza Fama, L.A.N.Z.A.F.A.M.A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, and planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey &amp; Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey. Testified before this board on numerous occasions and similar matters. Been licensed as an engineer and surveyor since 1984, and as a professional planner since 1985. And my licenses are all current.
Providing testimony tonight as a surveyor, as a planner?
As a surveyor and an engineer.
Surveyor and engineer. So you are PE?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, we will hear you as a surveyor and engineer.
Thank you.
And before you jump in, I would just like to ask if everybody is, if you're not speaking, if you could just mute yourself, and I will do the same just so we can avoid any feedback. Thanks so much.
You're very welcome. Yeah, and as Mr. Buzak pointed out, obviously, the first step in this matter would be the waiver request, one for the environmental impact statement. And I wouldn't necessarily call the stormwater management issue a waiver. It's really more like applying it to when the property is developed. There's, we are not asking that. We never provide stormwater management on this property. What we're asking to do is that it's not an appropriate time to apply it, since all we're doing at this point is creating a new lot line that divides the property into two. And on that issue, and that's why we feel that an environmental impact statement waiver request is appropriate in this particular case. The proposal is to subdivide the property into two lots, which, and I'd like to bring up an exhibit, which I guess we would mark as A1. And I think this, in my mind, aids in the determination as to whether or not this property and this application should be required to provide an environmental impact statement. The property in question, Mr. Buzak, this is A1. What this is, is a filed subdivision map of a subdivision that was performed in 1955, approved by the Milburn Planning Board and filed with the Essex County Clerk's Office. It's the map of rolling green estates. And this was the instrument that created the lots and the streets known as Slope Drive and Hartshorn.
Do you have a map number, Mr. Lanza Fama, for that?
I believe.
Probably on there somewhere, but.
The 37-5503, I don't believe, that's not the filed map number, but I can, I can provide that. I don't have it right in front of me at the moment. Maybe I do. It's.
Excuse me, Miss Saul. This is a court reporter. Miss Saul, do you hear me? No, she's muted.
Yes, I do hear you, Mr. Fishman.
I was telling Eileen that when you put up an exhibit and someone speaks, I don't know who's speaking because the exhibit is blocking out all the members. So somehow you're gonna have to state your name before you speak. Yes.
Okay, we will do that.
But when you're finished with the exhibit, if you take it out, then we don't have to do that. All right, go ahead.
This is Mike Lanza Fama speaking. The map is, as I said, map of rolling green estates filed in the Essex County Courthouse on August 17, 1956, as map number 2224. And the, again, the point in that I'm trying to make here is that this property was originally two lots at its inception in 1955, when the map was created. And the property was merged over time because there was a house constructed and subsequently some accessory structures, such as a patio and a pool, that fell into both lots. So under the Lochner Doctrine, it was merged into a single lot. That's why we're here this evening to subdivide. But the, the point I'm trying to make is that with this map in mind and with the concept of just establishing a lot line does not result in any environmental impacts. The property is not in a floodplain. It doesn't have wetlands that would affect it. There's only a small amount of steep slopes along the side property line that will not be impacted by any future home that's constructed because they're primarily outside of the building envelope. There are a number of mature trees located on the property. There are approximately, in total, between the two lots that we have before this application, there's about 116 trees. Of those 16 trees, about 50% are, 9% are in good condition, 51% are in fair condition. Everything else is in poor or very poor condition. They're all native species. There's no invasive species on the site. We did take a look at that, and they're a mixture of black gum, cherry, dogwood, elm, hickory, oak, red oak, sassafras. So there's a variety of trees on that site. But the development of the property would limit the removal of trees to basically the area in and about the building envelope. The area in the building envelope itself has about 85 trees in that area. However, that's what we showed on our plan. But keep in mind that there are 32 trees, or about 38% of those trees are six inches or less in diameter and do not even fall under your tree removal ordinance. So any development that would be done on the new lot is subject to a variety of reviews and standards that have to be met in the development that are already in place and that an environmental impact statement would not add to that. For example, to manage stormwater, we are required to submit to the engineering department a lot surface grading plan that will manage the stormwater from the roof area of the building. This property is less than one acre in size, so it is not subject to the best management practices. It's not considered a major development under either the residential site improvement standards or the state's best management practices or your own stormwater management ordinance. It's only considered a major subdivision because Milburn is a very unique community that states anytime you create a new building lot, it's automatically a major. 99% of the other communities I work in, including the county standard, this would be considered a minor subdivision. Erosion control measures are going to be governed by the Hudson Essex Basake Soil Conservation District because we're creating a new lot, and any new house that would be constructed on it would have to file an application with them. So you have another layer of review there. And then, of course, we have to submit to Mr. Doty for a tree removal permit, and that will be governed by your local tree ordinance. There's, there's nothing that I see in what we are proposing to do that would trigger such great concern from an environmental perspective. It's a single-family house in a residential zone, fully compliant with all of the aspects of the R5 Zone, as will the house that would be constructed, would be compliant. There's, there's nothing that I can see that would rise to the level of requiring a, an environmental impact statement. And as far as the stormwater management, as I stated, we will be providing stormwater management, just not at this point. There's no point in analyzing a site that has no building on it yet. And even if we analyzed it for the full development that would be possible for building and pavement as prescribed by the ordinance, we wouldn't be implementing that plan until such time as a lock grading permit was created. So I think, as I said over and over, the, in my mind, an environmental impact statement is not warranted for this particular application. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this particular issue.
Yeah. Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Lanza Fama regarding his statements?
I do.
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question. I was unaware that a DBH of six inches or less is not.
Hold on one moment. Mr. Fishman, we're getting a lot of feedback from your media team. Are you hearing us?
Yeah, so hold on a second. Someone's trying to call me, and I'm on vibrate. So hold on, let me, let me take care of this.
Okay.
All right.
Hold on one moment, Mark, because he's our stenographer, so.
No, I realize that.
That's what it was, the vibrating. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Fishman. Okay, let us know if you're okay to proceed. We can't hear you, but I'm assuming if you can give us a thumbs up, we can see you. You're okay, Mr. Fishman? Okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
We can now, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry about that. So Mark Mattel has a question. Go ahead.
Mr. Lanza Fama, I was unaware, and maybe because I was unaware, that, that six-inch DBH or less is not counted into the basal area replacement formula?
I believe that's correct. I believe that, yes, I believe that's the threshold, is six inches.
Yeah, I've never heard of that. So, yeah, that would be worth looking into our township committee members here because the American Society of Arboretum Culture has, whose standards tree replacement is based on, you know, have basically basal area replacement numbers for six inches or less. Yeah, okay. And is that, Martha, is that, is that confirmed, that no, that trees under a six-inch DBH aren't counted as?
They, you would have to check our township ordinance, the tree preservation ordinance. I don't have it memorized, but that would, I believe that Mike's right. It's six inches or less they don't need a tree removal permit for. So, you know, check the tree preservation ordinance that's in our township general ordinances.
Okay, and that's a six-inch DBH, though, correct?
Yeah, I, I'm checking. I'm trying to check now. I'm looking on your website. I can get that number for you and confirm that.
Okay. Any other questions with regards to his, his testimony of appeal for a request for a variant from the EIS or a waiver from the EIS requirement? I'm sorry. Mr. Buzak?
Ed, please unmute.
He's muted. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Lanza Fama, are you generally familiar with the proposed new stormwater management ordinance that the township is, has introduced and that is actually before the planning board tonight for a consistency review?
Yes, the, the new stormwater management regulations went into effect March 2 at the DEP level. They still define a major development as a development that disturbs more than one acre of land or results in more than a quarter acre of new impervious, what they refer to as automobile surface, because they make a distinction now between roof area and parking areas. So this, this proposal would not result in the disturbance of more than one acre of land or the creation of more than a quarter acre of new impervious surfaces. So we're clearly not subject to the best management practices or the state or the municipal stormwater management regulations, but we are subject to the standards for lock grading permits, which require that the new roof area has to be directed to a dry well, and we have to promote groundwater absorption to the greatest extent possible.
As an attorney, I'd always love to say after you do that, that, well, that's all very well and good, but that wasn't the question I was going to ask. But unfortunately, it was the question I was going to ask. So yes, Mr. Lanza Fama, thank you for answering the question I didn't ask, but you figured it out.
I'm reading your mind. I'm reading your mind.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mattel Pietro?
Thank you. So, this is a question, but it's a concern. Once we approve this subdivision, and once there is a new lot here, there will be a new construction there, and based on what I see on the drawings coming in the presentation from Mr. Lanza Fama, many of those trees are going to disappear. And I see here in front of my computer, I have the picture of that property. And it's a beautiful wooded area, and there is a house next door, actually, that is a new construction. And they removed so many trees in that to build that house. So I'm wondering, once I understand that the subdivision is everything as of right, and the two lots will be conforming lots, but I am still wondering what happened with all those trees that in some point, I know this is not the application, they are not asking to remove any tree today, but they will. So this EIS, it's not important to do it now, once we, they are requiring to have a subdivision, because they're going to come down at some point.
I, I guess I can try to answer your question with a question. What, what is an environmental impact statement going to tell you about the removal of trees that will be monitored by various agencies already within your engineering department and your public works department? Mr. Doty will monitor which trees can come down. The condition of the trees, as I pointed out, about half the trees are in poor, very poor condition. There are a significant number of them are, are less than 15 or 17 inches in size. I think, I think I counted about 75% of the trees are less than 17 inches in diameter. There are some very nice trees on the site. They are all native. There's no invasive species there that I would tell you that, you know, we should take those down anyway, as Mr. Doty often insists that any ash trees, for example, they should all come down. But in this particular case, we acknowledge we've, we've, we've inventoried those trees. We've showed them on a plan. I can tell you that in the building envelope on the new lot, there's about 43 trees. And 21 of those trees are about 49% or six inches in diameter or less. So you're, you're not going to have a significant impact on, on some native tree stand. This is not a heavily forested area. And the, the result is that, once we take those trees down, a new home would be constructed, there would be a very extensive landscaping plan prepared. A tree replacement plan has to be prepared under the ordinance. So this type of development is permitted and is, and is encouraged by the state's master plan. This is the type of infill development that they talk about to prevent suburban sprawl out into areas where you have more pristine forested areas. So my argument about the need for the environmental impact statement is that that document is really not going to change the result of what happens on this site. You already have measures in place that are going to police what we do, monitor what we do, and do it so that it creates the least amount of impact on the community and the adjoining property owners. So based upon that, I would, I would respectfully request that you grant us our request for the waiver.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to grant a waiver request for the EIS?
Make the motion, grant the waiver request for the EIS.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. That was Dan Bear, just for your records, too. Marion, was that you seconding it? Thank you. Are we at a vote, or are we all in? I think we have a vote, right?
Yes.
Eileen, you're muted. Yeah, there you go.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yeah.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yo, you're muted.
Yes.
Sanji Benayak?
Yes.
Marion Salerno?
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just a point, point of interest, Mr. Mattel. Your, your ordinance actually defines a tree as any tree greater than 10 inches, measured, measured four feet above the ground. So actually, any tree less than 10 inches doesn't fall under your ordinance. But we typically locate any tree over four inches in size when we're doing our surveys, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. So that's the waiver for the EIS that we discussed. And then the second was, I believe, the storm, stormwater checklist waiver item. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. The stormwater, as, as I mentioned, we're not really asking to not provide stormwater. We're just deferring it, if you would, to, at the point when we apply for a lock rating plan, which is submitted to Ms. Callahan for her review and approval. So it's, it's a gray area because, only because a, a major subdivision typically is one that requires some street improvements or multiple lots. Your ordinance is in that it's only a single lot in an improved area. So I would say we would ask for the waiver not asking not to provide stormwater management on any future development.
Great. And for, so in this case, Mr. Buzak, does this also require a vote on the board's willingness to grant this waiver request?
I, I think it does, and I think that any such waiver should include the condition, so to speak, that Mr. Lanza Fama mentioned, that while we're waiving this checklist requirement, that the applicant will comply with, with all township requirements related to that, relate, relating to stormwater discharge.
Great, thank you. I do see there is a member of the public who has a question. I don't know if we typically take questions at this point because we haven't completed the witnesses' testimony, but we're about to take a vote. So I, I'm up, and the hand is gone. So that, that answers that question. Okay, apologies. Anybody have a question for Mr. Lanza Fama regarding this request? I guess, John, like you do.
I just have a question again. When I look at the checklist, there's no stormwater item or, like, again, how, what, what waiver is being requested?
It's, I think it was 525, Tony?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, to be perfectly honest, I didn't think it was a waiver, Tony, but.
Yeah, I don't. I don't, I don't see it on the checklist. That's why I'm a little confused. Existing and proposed runoff, yeah.
Yeah, there's a sec, it's talked about runoff calculation.
Insisting on proposal.
Right. So we're, we're basically deferring that to a future date.
Thank you.
Okay, understood. Would anybody like to make a motion to grant the stormwater-related checklist waiver request?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll take it again.
Daniel Baer?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanjay Venaiak?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for get, letting us get that out of the way. And feel free to proceed as you will.
Mr. Alonzo Farmer, tell us what you've reviewed and prepared for the balance of your testimony this evening.
Certainly. As in preparation of creating the subdivision, we performed a boundary topographic survey of the property known as 121 Lope Drive, which is tax lot two in block thirty-seven oh one. And it's located in the R5 residential zone district. It sits on the southern corner of the intersection of Hartshorn Drive and Slope Drive. In addition to the survey work that we performed, we also reviewed the zoning ordinance as well as the master plan with regard to creation of the subdivision, or, or I'd like to say recreation of the subdivision, since this, these were two lots that were created back in nineteen fifty-five through the.
I apologize, Mr. Alonzo Farmer. I'm going to interrupt you just to ask everybody to mute if, if you're not, I'm hearing a little feedback. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to share my screen at the moment and continue my discussion. What, what you're seeing on the screen, this, again, this is Mike Alonzo Farmer with KCN Keller speaking. What you see on the screen is the cover sheet that shows you a portion of your tax map. On the right-hand side, this is the cover sheet, sheet one, and the four sheet set of plans that were submitted to the board for this particular application. You can see the gray area is the property in question. It's point nine-two acres in size, as I said, located in the R5 district. Hartshorn Drive runs on the northwest side of the property. Slope Drive on the northeast side of the property. It's bounded by other R5 residential lots. Across Slope and across Hartshorn Drive are lots located in the R4 zone.
So Alonzo Farmer, before you continue, Mr. Fishman, this is Ed Boozak speaking. We need to mark this exhibit and any other ones that you put up on the screen. So we should mark this A2. This is the cover sheet, one of the plans that have been submitted to the board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. And all your testimony, the document to which you're referring is A2. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm going to move on now to the existing conditions map, which is the survey we performed of the property, which is sheet two. So this would be A3?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what sheet A3 depicts is the existing site conditions. Slope Drive is at the top of the sheet. Hartshorn is to the left. Hartshorn Drive is to the left. And as you can see, there is an existing structure on the property that has access directly to Slope Drive. There is an in-ground pool patio area and shed in the backyard. You can see the topography of the site is such that it slopes from a high area. And the northern corner, it slopes downward in a westerly and southerly direction towards Hartshorn Drive. There is a small pocket of steep slopes located along that southwestern boundary line of the property. The lot itself has frontage of one hundred and ninety-three point nine feet along Hartshorn Drive and one hundred and fifty-one point five feet along Slope Drive. The, that is the existing condition map. As you can see, we have located all the existing trees on the property, four inches in size and greater. Moving on to the actual subdivision plat itself, this is the preliminary subdivision plat. This would be A3?
A4.
Or, I'm sorry, A4. This is sheet three in your set of plans. And what this depicts is how we would actually subdivide the property. So what we would do is take that southwestern portion of the property that fronts on Hartshorn Drive and, and create a new subdivision line perpendicular to Hartshorn Drive that would intersect the existing easterly boundary of the property. We would provide ninety-nine feet of frontage along Hartshorn Drive and create a new lot, which we've designated on this plat as two point oh two. And it would be nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty-seven square feet in size. The remnant parcel would be lot two point oh one. And that would be twenty thousand five hundred and ninety square feet in size. Excuse me. And this would be the location of the existing house, which would remain on the site. The proposal is to remove the existing pool and a portion of the patio area that exists in that backyard area so that you would not have any exist, existing accessory structures over straddling the property line. So those, those existing improvements would be removed prior to the recordation of the plat to create the new subdivision. To just go through the metrics to show compliance, the R5 zone requires fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. And as I've stated, lot two point oh one is twenty thousand five ninety and two point oh two is nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. The minimum lot with requirement is seventy-five feet. And the minimum lot depth requirement is one hundred and twenty-five. Lot two point oh one is a corner lot, having, as I said, one hundred and fifty-one point nine feet of frontage along slope and ninety-four point nine feet along Hartshorn Drive. The interior lot or the lot that fronts on Hartshorn would have ninety-nine foot width and a depth of one hundred and ninety-six point eight four feet. Excuse me. Front yard setback requirement would be forty feet. The slope drive property would have a frontage of forty-one point one three feet. And it would have a setback from Hartshorn of forty-two point nine seven, thereby being compliant. Any new house constructed on lot two point oh two would comply with the forty-foot minimum setback requirement. Side yard setbacks required are anywhere from twelve to sixteen feet, depending upon the height of the structure. The left side, excuse me, on the lot fronting on slope would be forty-four point six four. The right side setback would be nineteen point seven. The, any new lot created and any new house constructed would comply with those setbacks as shown on the plat. Combined side yard width would be thirty-five feet, thirty-five percent, excuse me, of the lot width, which calculates out to be thirty-four point six five feet on the new lot. Corner lot does not have that requirement. Excuse me. The rear lot, rear setbacks, excuse me, is twenty-five percent of the lot depth. Again, a corner lot does not have that requirement, but the interior lot would be thirty-nine point three seven feet. Building coverage maximum is eighteen percent. The remnant parcel would have a building coverage of fifteen point nine. Any new building would have a maximum footprint of three thousand five hundred and eight square feet. Lot coverage is permitted to be thirty-five percent. The remnant parcel fronting on slope is at twenty-eight point seven percent. And the new lot could have a maximum of six thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. Just a point of interest, we're removing about eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet, which makes up the pool and patio area, so that the net increase would only be about four thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet. The FAR that's allowed is thirty percent. The existing home is at twenty point seven percent. And the allowed on, on the new lot would be five thousand eight hundred and forty-six square feet. So clearly, the lot is in full compliance with the ordinance. And as I've said earlier in my testimony, any development on the site would be subject to soil erosion, sediment control, review and approval, lot surface grading plan, tree removal permits. These would all be necessary before a home was constructed. That's, that's basically the application to perfect the subdivision. We would be recording a subdivision plat with the County of Essex. As part of that procedure, there will be a number of monuments that will need to be set. And we'll have to post a bond with, with the building department prior to recordation of that plat. But it's a pretty standard routine as far as perfecting the subdivision by plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions you, you all might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alonzo Farmer. Mr. Steinberg, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we can hear you.
Okay. I have two questions for.
Let's speak up because we can hear you softly.
I have two questions for Mr. Alonzo Farmer. The first is, on this drawing that you put up, which is, I think, sheet three of the drawing that you have submitted to the board, it shows a, a building on what would be the corner lot. Is that building a new building or is that building the existing building? So I went by there, I went by there today and it looked, there were four workmen up on the roof. And it looked to me as if that was a new building.
That, that, that building is undergoing renovation. It's the same building footprint. They're basically, the existing house was a one-story ranch. They're, they've filed for a building permit to put a second story addition on it. And that's what is being constructed at the current time. And that is all still compliant with the testimony I just gave.
My second, my second question is, are you making a representation to this board that there will be no applications for adjustments or variances for the new house to be constructed on the second lot?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not offering that, nor would I ever have a property owner take away his rights as a property owner and making an application to the zoning board. But I, I got to tell you, I, I wouldn't be the planner on that case because it would be a very hard sell. You're creating a lot to then come in for a setback or coverage variance. To my mind, would be a very hard sell to the zoning board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Alonzo Farmer on this testimony? Go ahead, Mr. Boozak.
Mr. Alonzo Farmer, what, what is the anticipated time for the removal of the pool and that portion of the patio that, that would be on this lot?
Very, very soon. Actually, we were proposing to have it removed. And then the weather turned on us. So now that the weather's cleared up, I would imagine within the next thirty to sixty days, it would be gone.
The reason I ask is that I would think that any condition, that any approval that this board would give would include a condition that the plat or the subdivision could not be perfected whether due by platter deed until those improvements were removed and there was something submitted confirming the removal of those improvements.
Yes, I would concur with that. Sure.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Mr. Alonzo Farmer? Okay. I would open it up to members of the public. If anybody has a question for Mr. Alonzo Farmer on the testimony given, now is the opportunity to use the raise hand function. And we will call you in. If you just want to provide a, a statement, not a question of Mr. Alonzo Farmer, you will have the opportunity to do that later. But this is for questions. It looks like Ryan Nash. Looked like you had your hand raised. Oh, no, Al Kim is coming in. Okay. Welcome. I think this is Al Kim. You would just have to unmute and we can hear you. You're still muted. Okay, I don't know if it's Mr. or Ms. Kim, but it looks like you're in our room, but you are on mute. I don't know if you've had a, a comment or a question for Mr. Alonzo Farmer.
Is anyone else, I mean, if anybody else in the gallery has one?
It looks like there's another, yeah. Who has a question. Evan Bruce Dean.
They, they may not know how to unmute. Is it star six or star nine? There we go.
There, Mr. Bruce Dean, I think you're with us.
Yes. How are you? So I was just.
If I could ask you to just state your name and address for the record and then begin your question.
Sure. Evan Bruce Dean, three fifty-eight Oxford Drive. You, you spoke about the different trees that are healthy and that aren't. And I think about fifty percent, you said, are not in good condition. So I just was wondering if you could speak to the breakdown of how, what percentage of the healthy trees would be in the area that could be taken down? And just so there's an understanding more in terms of what healthy trees there are because if it's only eighty trees and most of those are where the new house would be built, I think that would be significant.
Yeah, I, I believe my testimony was that there's, there's eighty-five total trees on what would be the new lot two point oh two. And there's forty-three trees that are in the building envelope. I don't have, I don't have it broken down so I could tell you specifically what the percentage is in the building envelope that are fair, poor, good. I, I just have the, the overall statistics. I don't have that particular map with me. But on, on average, about half the trees were in good to fair condition. I would assume that would apply to the building envelope as well.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Bruce Dean?
I, I mean, so is that based on just a random guess? Or did you notice that they were all?
This is, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just wondering if, if you said you don't have it in front of you. Is that a guess? Or are you, did you notice that they were consistently healthy and not healthy interspersed?
The, what I was saying was that I have, I also have a map that has each tree numbered. We've tagged every tree. We've had a landscape architect review and evaluate every tree on site. And that's where I developed my statistics from. And I didn't have, I didn't bring with me that one particular map that I could point to you and say tree number six is good or not good. I have that back at my office. But the, the summary sheet I did bring with me indicates that about fifty percent or fifty-three percent of the trees on the property are in good of the trees on the property are in good to fair condition. And I would say to you, I would offer to you that it's probably a reasonable assumption to assume that the trees in that building envelope are probably the same percentage. But again, that that review is going to be done by Mr. Doty. At the time, a building is developed for the property, a house is developed for the property, and those trees would be further evaluated by him. And then we'd be determined what the replacement requirement would be for those trees.
And Mr. Lanza Fama, if I could just jump in, because I'm not sure if you know who Mr. Doty is, Mr. Bruce Dean. But that is the town forester who reviews all applications. And and as Mr. Lanza Fama was saying, there would be tree replacement requirements for those taken down during construction that are, you know, that that hit the requirement, which is what he was discussing of inch of diameter and health of the tree.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I saw Mim Subotovski has a question and then let's start there. Welcome, you should be in and able to unmute yourself. I don't know.
Hi, how are you?
Great. If I could ask you to say your name and address for our record.
Sure, Guido Subotovski, three fifty six Hartshorn Drive. Thank you. So I I heard a question from, I believe, one of the board members that was an interesting one, which was, I want to be sure I understood it correctly. I believe there was a question pertaining to the subdivision and whether or not applicant was looking to make or was willing to make a representation as to whether or not they would potentially be coming back for a variance on a house we built on the interior lot as a connect as a result or extension connection with the subdivision or a change that they might want to make, whether it be side yard, et cetera. First, I just want to be sure if I understood that question correctly. And if so, if the if the applicant wouldn't mind just repeating what the answer was to that.
Certainly, Mr. Steinberg was questioning me as to whether or not I was stating to the board that the builder of the property or the homeowner that purchases that lot would never come in and ask for a variance. I explained to him that I was not offering that. I would not prevent a client or any property owner from their right to apply to a zoning board for a variance. However, I was stating that I believe that it would be a very hard sell to a zoning board to grant a variance on a lot that was newly created that was fully conforming and would allow for the construction of a single family home without the need for variance. And I I believe that was the summary of my response.
Thank you. So it would be correct to see, or it would be reasonable to assume that nobody is thinking that this subdivision could somehow create a new nonconformance?
Not not that I'm aware of. I I wouldn't expect that. It's highly unlikely.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you for the question clarification. I also see Ryan Nash has a hand raised. Welcome, you should be able to join us. Great.
Got it.
Name and address, please.
Ryan Nash, three sixty five Hartshorn Drive. So maybe as sort of a follow up question, you know, in in your professional opinion, how do you plan to address the severe downward slope on the property? Given that, you know, a driveway would likely need to be on that side of the house. Maybe as a follow up to Mr. Bernstein's question, is the intention to remove all trees on the property?
No, the intention is not to remove all the trees on the property. The driveway could be located on either the uphill or the downhill side. You know, looking at the topography, you're looking at roughly four, five, maybe six feet of grade differential from the northern boundary line to the southern boundary line. This might be an ideal scenario for basement type garage scenario where what we refer often as a garage under, which would work with the topography or some mid mid level garage. As I said, we haven't gotten into the design of the house, but we will make every effort to work with the existing topography. That's not to say that some of the backyard area would not be graded out to create a flatter area. I know many homeowners that we get involved with in building homes in short hills. One of the first questions they ask us is can we make a flatter backyard? And so there there would be some regrading in in the rear yard area, I would imagine. It could be that we lower the grade somewhat between the property to our north so that we kind of balance the site out. But yeah, there's a, there's a number of mechanisms that we could use working with the existing topography and also making some modifications that would have minimal impact on the adjoining properties to the south and west.
Thank you. Okay, that answered your that question. And and Mr. Lanza Fama, I'm just going to ask a follow up question to that question, which is in the case of a regrading of a backyard and potentially take down of more trees, that would also be subject to a review by the town forester and replacement in kind of any healthy trees that are taken down?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Um, anybody else from the public have any questions for Mr. Lanza Fama on that testimony? Okay. And seeing none others from the board, I hand it back to you, Mr. Sarso.
We have nothing further to present. And we would ask that the board approve the subdivision since it's fully conforming and classified as of a a right to have the subdivision.
Thank you. Okay, so before we move to any vote, I want to offer any members of the public who are here that just wanted to provide testimony, not necessarily ask a question, but just to make a statement on being sworn in. Now is the opportunity for that. So you would just raise hands up and Mr. Nash, you're already here. So why don't we have you do that? So Mr. Fishman, if you would have liked to swear in Mr. Nash for his testimony.
Raise your right hand, sir, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter not pending?
I do.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Your full name, please?
Ryan Matthew Nash.
And your address, please?
Three six five Hartshorn Drive.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, my name is Ryan Nash. I am the homeowner of three sixty five Hartshorn Drive in the R five district. And, you know, I did want to formally object to the subdivision. I know others feel the same way. And I just want to say thank you to the planning board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. You know, the the plans that were submitted show, you know, to the town show that the developer is hoping to wedge an extra house between several of our homes. And it does not align with the rest of the homes from a size and space perspective. This will increase traffic in our area, which obviously none of us want. It's going to create overcrowding on the street on both Hartshorn and slope and cause many of us to deal with another period of prolonged construction after we've already been dealing with it for one twenty one slope. So, you know, this has already created a hardship for the rest of us. And and I did want to state for the record that there have been many instances where the builder has violated the town rules in terms of what time workers are allowed to begin each day. And, you know, after constantly hearing work for before AM, I finally reached out to Mr. Tong, who's the owner of one twenty one slope to notify him that if this continues, myself and the other neighbors are going to be submitting a formal complaint with the town. So that's all I had to say for the record. And I just wanted to say again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Nash, okay, appreciate it. I see Tim Fram has his hand raised as well. So Tim, welcome. You should be in. And if you want to come off mute, and then we'll have you also sworn in. Mr. Fishman?
You want to unmute, please?
He is.
Mr., I'm sorry, where is?
I don't know where he appears on your screen. Can you just speak and you'll pop up?
Raise your right hand, sir, please. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter not pending?
Do.
Okay, just state your name. You can put your hand up. State your name, please, and spell it.
Timothy Fram, T I M O T H I F R A M, and I'm at Slope Drive.
What is it?
One zero eight Slope Drive.
Yes, thank you. Okay, you may proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the concerns of safety of construction in the area. I don't think right now is a really good time for new construction to be happening, especially with the recent storms and all the additional outside activity that we've been having in our neighborhood. It's a big hazard with all the construction debris flying into space, flying into the streets. Also, the construction sites have not been secured. The storms have blown down the fences fairly easily and people have, you know, again, with all the people outside, it's been a bit of a safety hazard. So I feel as a resident that this is just not the best time for such a subdivision and construction to take place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. I now see Al Kim's hand is raised again. Hopefully this will work to bring you on in. Hi, good evening. You should be with us now.
Hi, hi, sorry, I'm Mike Graceley. I'm Al's wife.
Oh, no, no problem. So we're going to have you sworn in to provide your testimony. So our our stenographer will ask you to raise your right hand and.
Sure, sure.
Listen, so go ahead, Mr. Fishman.
Yes, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter not pending?
Yes, I do.
Okay, state your full name and spell it, please.
It's Graceley. It's G R A C E dash L E E.
And your address, please?
It's three fifty five, three fifty four Hartshorn Drive.
Thank you.
So I mean, I would concur with my neighbors, Tim and Ryan. I mean, there's increasing traffic, there's increasing kind of concerns about safety of construction. And I I know this board and I've been listening to the board meetings the past couple of months. There is a lot of focus on kind of, you know, you know, nature and the trees. But, you know, I have two little kids. I'm very focused on their safety. Many of us have families and there's no dedicated streets on Hartshorn. And for me, for those streets get increasingly busy, for it to be increasingly congested with construction is is a cause of alarm for for myself. So I think, you know, that that's one thing I would I would add in addition to the points that Tim and Ryan have brought up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And so I see Mr. Subotovski has a testimony as well. You can bring him in. Welcome back and we will have you sworn in again.
Sure. Guido, G U I D O.
I'm sorry, who's being sworn in now?
This is, the last name is Subotovski. He should appear on your screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, raise your right hand, sir, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter not pending?
I do.
Okay, and maybe we have your full name, please. Again, spell it and your dress.
Sure, Guido, G U I D O. Subotovski, S U B O T O V S K Y. I live at three fifty six Hartshorn Drive.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you again, members of the board. As I mentioned, my name is Guido Subotovski. We just actually, we are, my wife and my two daughters are just now moving into three fifty six Hartshorn Drive. While certainly echoing the the points of my fellow neighbors with respect to construction activity and safety, I also do have two very young children and on the street that can get very busy, especially during drop off and pickup from schools. There's a fair amount of activity and I definitely would have have concerns and want to see what a construction logistic plan would actually look like to build on that area of Hartshorn without without creating a hazardous condition, frankly. And in addition, I'd also like to just repeat my previous point prior to my testimony, which was that frankly, I do have a hard time seeing how a house is going to be proposed for that piece of property post subdivision without the need for some sort of variance. Because just practically speaking, looking at the house, which essentially eliminates the yard of the house on slope and creates a situation that probably is going to result in a front facing driveway, I should say driveway and garage, which is even worse for traffic. But I I just, I just have a hard time seeing the logic behind the subdivision other than financial merit. But that that's all I have to add for for this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Mr. Bruce Dean also would like to come back.
I'm sorry, we're.
Evan Bruce Dean is going to be brought in. He's he's currently in the panel, but he'll come in to be sworn in and provide his testimony. And he's just arriving now. Okay.
Did we already swear him in? I don't know.
He he asked question. I don't think, I don't think you were sworn in. Were you, Mr. Bruce?
No, I don't believe so.
Raise your right hand, sir, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter not pending?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we have your full name spelled, please.
Yes, Evan Bruce Dean, E V A N B R U S T E I N.
And your address, please?
Three fifty eight Oxford Drive.
Thank you, good. You may proceed.
I I just want to echo the sentiment from my question that I'm concerned about the fact that there isn't enough information about.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you. You have to speak up, please.
Not a problem. Is that better?
Well, proceed and we'll see.
Okay, very well. So I am concerned about the lack of information as to which trees will actually need to be destroyed. I am concerned about the fact that there's not more information about what a second home would look like in that area. Since the first home is already going for variances and permission to build upward, it seems clear to me that based on the neighborhood, similar variances would be requested down the road. And I don't want there to be a situation where the board is feeling compelled to create variances because the house that they envision in the future cannot actually be built there. And so I think that more information is needed as to what the realistic expectation of a house fitting into that space is. And I think it's a lot easier to say yes to an empty lot than to look at the future and what is expected. And I don't want there to be a situation where the lot is subdivided and nothing can actually happen with it. So the board feels compelled to create further variances that they wouldn't otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. And the additional members of the public want to provide any statements regarding this application? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nash. I know you you gave a testimony, but we can have you come on back.
Hi, I just had a follow up, you know, question on the comment that Mr. Bernstein, Evan had said prior to me. You know, is it possible, do we approve subdivisions without actually seeing what the proposed new structure is? I know that the engineer, you know, rattled off a handful of numbers, size and the like. But I I think we all echo, you know, the same sentiment that it it seems almost inevitable that they will be coming back for variances, you know, for the, you know, so that they can have a proposed structure that, you know, will create financial gain for the developer. And, you know, clearly, all of us are uncomfortable with that. So we just wanted to get a sense for, you know, is it possible to approve a subdivision without even knowing what a new structure could even potentially look like? Thank you.
Sure, thanks for that question. I don't know, Mr. Phillips, if you want to, if I could call you to, as our planner, to respond to that, I can give it a go. But I would be happy to have you kind of weigh in. Do you understand?
The the short answer is yes, the proposed subdivision here basically would render the existing building on the remnant lot conforming with setback requirements. There's no construction proposed yet on the lot two point oh two. The subdivision complies with the R five zone dimensional requirements, both lots. The subdivision complies with the R five zone dimensional requirements, both lots. And it would appear to me that the new lot has a realistic building envelope based on R five zone standards. And so that it could readily accommodate a dwelling. It appears that it would have a usable rear yard area and could meet coverage and FAR requirements. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't guarantee that someone might not come in for something that would require a variance. But I think the, the new lot is acceptable in terms of accommodating a dwelling based on the the building envelope. And I also agree with Mr. Alonso Farmer that someone would be hard pressed to come in after the subdivision and seek variances that go beyond what's shown on the plans in terms of the, the building envelope and the various zone standards that would have to be met.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And just to add to that, I think you've kind of covered it, but there is no requirement that they come to this meeting with a plan drawn up of the house that is proposed for that second.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, seeing no questions, I think most of the members of the public were able to, to speak. Discussion among the board. If anybody has any comments, thoughts, we certainly, you know, heard concerns from neighbors. But I think we also heard, you know, the testimony from the, Mr. Alonso Farmer in support of this application. And I know you mentioned the condition, I believe, of the pool removal being something to consider. I don't think I noted any anything else that we might want to discuss or consider.
I think we have our, our standard conditions, which more generically incorporate the testimony related to complying with all ordinances and rules and regulations and so forth. We have three or four standard conditions that will be there. And, and I would add to this as belt and suspenders, actually, the issue again of the stormwater management or stormwater discharge being addressed at the time of building permit, just to emphasize that point. Other than those, I do not have any other conditions.
Okay, any members of the board have any opinions or concerns before we put it to a vote? Mr. Bear?
I have a question for counsel. I don't, I don't understand as a, as a condition of this application that we ask them to comply with regulations that are imposed upon them irrespective. They have to go through review with the engineer, with the, with the, with Tom Doty, they have grading plans, they have to prepare. They have to do those. We have regulations that are established that, that, that they will have to conform to. So why are we saying that they have to go, that we have to make these a condition of this application when they have to go through them anyways? I don't understand that.
Well, the only reason I said it and I prefaced it with being belt and suspenders. I'm not a belt and suspenders guy, but in terms of discussions here, and I guess when we have, when we focus on a particular aspect of something, I like to, you know, I think that's a concern that the board has and I want to emphasize it in the resolutions. However, correct that they have to comply and we do have the generic provision in the resolution. Again, belt and suspenders because theoretically doesn't have to be in the resolution, they have to do it anyway, but we do put it in there that they have to comply with all those requirements.
Counsel, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll leave that up to the applicant. If they, they want to comply with, with those conditions, that's up to them. I personally did, you know, question why we have to belt and suspend or everything when it's already, when development would already be subject to those reviews. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Don't worry, I wasn't sure if you're raising your hand or just.
No, I'm actually working with my phone, so just.
Okay, no problem. And then, that's okay. Mark, did you have something? No, you're okay, okay. Okay. Well, given the testimony we heard tonight, I, you know, I think it's barring the, you know, waiver requests, I think they provided testimony to in support of their case and, you know, can have shown that it is possible to develop a, you know, a property and a home on a that fits within the allowable footprint within our ordinance, so. I don't know that we need to add the onerous in agreement and concurrence with Mr. Bear's questioning. I don't know that we have to kind of state that they have to do what they already have to do. It feels like a bit of a redundant requirement, but but I do like the idea of asking them to remove, you know, the, the, make the ground, what is it, flat or fill the pool in and prove, and prove such. Does anybody have thoughts on that with respect to what Dan had suggested?
Actually, let me clarify my suggestion. If the applicant is okay with those conditions, that's fine. I'm just stating the fact that I don't quite understand why we have to pile on, but, but I'll leave, I'll leave it alone. I'll leave it alone, so.
Mr. Sirsolo, any comment on that?
It really doesn't matter to the applicant whether those additional statements are in there or not. You have to comply with the law. We know that. I leave it up to the board. I leave it up to the planning board attorney.
Okay, so Ed, the call is yours. I think we're all being so polite. I think let's include it for the sake of what belt and suspenders, nobody does that anymore, but, um, fine, we can leave it in. I suppose it is, maybe it's redundant, but we can have it there for emphasis. So I will make a motion to approve the application under the condition of the filling in the pool as well as our standard.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, Mark Mattel, I see you have a question and I did not see it before. I apologize. Mark, are you, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, as long as we're piling, sort of like a detailed tree inventory.
Excuse me, Mr. Mattel, can you please raise your voice up? It's hard to hear.
Apologies. I would like to add a detailed tree inventory because a half live tree or a half dead tree is still alive. And I just want to be sure that the trees that Mr. Alonso Farmer referenced are truly dead. You know, and I hate to play the Lorax, but I've got to.
Okay, so you're requesting a submission of what he referenced that he had as a tree diagram, the survey?
Yeah, just a little more detail. Like, he, Mr. Alonso Farmer said that we've got X numbers of species that are dead.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Mr. Sirsolo. I do not think that is part of the township zoning ordinance. So I don't know why that would have to be an extra requirement.
Well, it's referenced in the master plan, the planning master plan, and I pretty much.
We're not, I apologize, but we're not subject to the master plan. We don't have any variance relief. We are bound by the township zoning ordinance and the municipal land use law with which we comply.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes, let me just say, I should say that we should respond to the concerns that we heard from some of the neighbors. This board has no jurisdiction under the law to deal with things like construction, traffic, stuff like that. The, and as far as the issue that we're talking about right now is concerned, that is in the jurisdiction of the town forester. We shouldn't be involved in that at all. So I, as far as I'm concerned, the applicant has met its burden of proof in terms of what they need to show to this board to get a resolution of approval for the subdivision. And I just want to say to Mr. Land, Landso Farmer that if any applications are made to the zoning board, you can be sure in order copies of what are you saying? You know exactly what I'm talking about, right?
I could, I would only say that I would send Rich Keller and I would never go.
Yeah, I know, I know that you would never go. And Mr. Keller won't go either.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Joe. Point, I appreciate those, both of those points. Mr. Bear, go ahead and then.
And I actually agree with most of everything Mr. Steinberg said. The action tonight in front of this board, in front of this board is the establishment of a lot line. That's essentially what it is. It's a subdivision. It's an established, it's not construction. It's the establishment of a lot line and nothing more than that. And do these properties comply with zoning? Okay, does the existing house still comply with zoning? Mr. Loza Farmer has testified to the fact that it does. Does the, is the other lot still buildable under zoning? Mr. Loza Farmer has testified that it is, okay? Has nothing to do with removing trees, grading or anything. I appreciate everything that the neighborhood has said tonight and they absolutely should keep those things in mind and can bring those to the town when construction moves forward on that property. And in, if it has to go to the zoning board, you can go in front of Joe. And if they have to go through a variance, you can go in front of Joe. But tonight, the only thing under the purview of this planning board is the establishment of a lot line. Okay, I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Busak, what would you advise since we had a motion and a second, but then we didn't act? Do we want to repeat that or?
Well, we have a motion in a second. If Mr. Mattel's request was essentially a request to amend that motion to add another condition, the board's discussed it. Is there, is there a second to the, I assume, Mr. Mattel, that was your purpose? Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a second to Mr. Mattel's request to amend the motion that had been made to add the condition regarding the tree inventory? Madam Chair, if there's no second, then the, the motion fails and we stay with the motion that was made, I believe, by the chair.
Okay. Okay, so, yes, the motion I made, which had been seconded, though.
Yes, it had been seconded, I guess. So we're voting on that, correct?
Yes, correct.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Jason Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mastropiacho?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanji Vanaya?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, application twenty zero fourteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso Farmer, Mr. Sirsolo. Okay, so as you're exiting our room, as Eileen moves you out, we are moving on to our item of new business, which is ordinance twenty five sixteen nine dash twenty one, which is regarding stormwater controls. We received.
Excuse me, Mr. Courtier, do you need me for this? Because normally, usually you don't.
We, we do not need you for this. I believe Eileen can take the notes, right?
Eileen.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
So we received the paper of the proposed amendment or proposed ordinance. And then we also received last week, I believe it was, an email with the attachment providing the description and context as set forth by Martha, our engineer. And we are fortunate to have Martha with us tonight. If anybody did have any remaining or outstanding questions that arose regarding this adoption of this required updated ordinance. Mr. Steinberg?
Madam Chair? Am I unmuted? Yes.
You're unmuted, you're just still stopped, but it's okay.
I think it would be appropriate if counsel would indicate to the board exactly what our role is here.
Sure. So to repeat that, did you hear that Joe is requesting you remind us what our role is?
When there's a land development ordinance that's referred to the planning board, the planning board has two functions. One is to make a determination as to whether that ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan. And the second role is to make any recommendations to the township committee with regard to that, to that ordinance. And then there are consequences to each of those if the board finds that the ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan, then the township has to take certain actions when they, if they are going to adopt the ordinance. And similarly, if we make recommendations, they have to set forth and, and they don't follow those recommendations, they have to set forth in the record of why they're not following those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was helpful context. Appreciate the request, Joe. That said, any discussion or thoughts, questions? Okay, not seeing any. Martha, you wrote a very helpful memo that gave us all the information we needed, so thank you. I really actually did think that was very helpful in terms of accompaniment to review it. So appreciate that.
It's, it's kind of, I mean, at this point, the DEP is requiring this, the state is requiring it. We don't really have other choice, so. And it actually is, it's, it's a lot of what I think Mark speaks about a lot and Jorge speaks about a lot. This is incorporating the green infrastructure that we know is coming in the future. We, we, you know, this is going to be very helpful, but it does only apply to our major developments. So anything that is an acre or greater in, in development. So.
Can I have a question?
Go ahead, Jorge.
So can we incorporate also minor development in the ordinance? We can go beyond code. We don't have to go what the state say, we can go beyond that. Can we add minor developments to, to the ordinance, not just major developments?
You can always make it more strict than what the, what's out. So that's always an option. I wouldn't suggest tonight adding this. One of the things, our, our revised general ordinances in our township require for any development that is greater than two hundred square feet of new impervious coverage that, that requires stormwater detention. And we do that on all of our residential properties right now. So we are much stricter than the state at this point in our ordinance. So my suggestion would be if you want to tweak anything, go back to our general ordinances, chapter seventeen in the township, and we can always make adjustments to that ordinance. This stormwater control ordinance is mainly geared toward major developments. Again, anything greater than an acre or that creates in our new, this is new in the ordinance, that creates a quarter acre or more of regulated motor vehicle surface, which is, this is a new definition. So.
Understandable. And what we're being asked is not to write it, but to state whether it is not inconsistent with the master plan. But, but Jorge, that's a, that's a good point and something to, you know, that could be followed up on. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Given that, I would propose for us to vote that this ordinance 2569, I would make a motion to state that ordinance 2569 21 is not inconsistent with our master plan.
I say good night.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halfer?
Yes.
Jorge Mastrocchio?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanji Vanaya?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Sol?
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you all. I don't even know what to do. It's only 9:03. I second. Okay, we have a motion and second to adjourn by Joe and Miriam. Thank you all. Meeting is concluded at 9:04 PM. We will see you, I think, we have two weeks, I think we have two weeks left.
Yeah, we have new applications for the March 17th meeting.
We have no applications, you said?
No, so the next meeting would be the special meeting on the 31st with.
Like a vacation. This is, I I see smiles all around.
Changes between now and Friday, you never know.
Okay, so as of now, it's looking like our next meeting will be Wednesday, March 31st, the continuation on the 85 but barring we hear anything from Eileen that there's any items that need to get taken care of sooner. Okay, happy March.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, have a good night.